Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the May 20th, 2015 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We have some committee reports, I believe, on comprehensive plan. Mr. Moan.
Yes, Madam Chair. We met last week and had some additional discussion about progress with the Kernstown area plan, and also discussed the upcoming Public Information and Input Meeting, which will be held next Tuesday, May 26th, at 7:00 PM at the Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit Building on Route 11 South of Winchester. Certainly encourage everybody, certainly on the commission, that can make it to come out and participate, and anyone in the public as well with interest.
Great, thank you very much. And from Winchester, Mr. Mark Loring.
Yes, thank you. Two items of note, if I might. We had our business meeting yesterday, last night, and two public hearings. One was an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance for home improvement donation centers in the M1, B2, and B1 areas. And then we had a request from the city for conditional use permit for the amphitheater behind the Taylor Pavilion, and that's for later hours, Thursday through Sunday. Both of those were recommended approval to the council. Thank you.
Sir. And from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Hess.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Since the last Planning Commission meeting on May the 6th, there was one Board of Supervisors meeting, and that was on May 13th. There were several Planning Commission items of business. First, there was a public hearing on the rezoning for the Blackburn Commerce Center in the Back Creek District. There was only one citizen comment, and the rezoning was unanimously approved by the board. Then there was an ordinance amendment regarding, including OM, Office Manufacturing District, as a permitted use in the R4 district. There were no public comments or board questions, and that was also unanimously approved by the board. The third item was an ordinance amendment regarding permeable pavers, and there were no public comments, and it was unanimously approved by the board. Then two other items, not for public hearing, but the rezoning of the CB Ventures property down on Ailer Road in Stevens City, which had been postponed from the board meeting on March 11th. There were a couple of comments made by citizens at the opening of the meeting, because there was no public hearing specifically for this rezoning on May the 13th. Right before the meeting, the applicant had revised the proffer to reduce the height limitation to 35 feet, and also provided some additional information at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So the board voted again to delay this vote, this time until June 10th, in order to evaluate the information that was provided. And then the master development plan for the Blackburn Center, or Blackburn property, the board approved the request to waive the restriction on private roads for the subdivision.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I think we're at the end of our committee reports. Is there anyone in the audience? This is the time for citizen comments, and if you have something you'd like to speak to us about, other than what's on the agenda, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Anybody? Anybody at all? Citizen comment? All right. We will close the citizen comment portion. Our first item is a public hearing, and it's the 2015-2020 Agricultural and Forestal District Update. This public hearing is to consider the renewal of the following agricultural and forestal districts: Alben, Apple Pie Ridge, Double Church, Green Springs, north of Hecken, Redbud, South Frederick, and South Timber Ridge. A renewal of these districts will establish a total of 11,425 acres within the agricultural and forestal district program for the ensuing five-year period. Properties are incorporated into an agricultural and forestal district are guaranteed certain protection as specified in Section 15.2-4300 of the Code of Virginia. Mr. Charon.
Madam Chairman, I need to recuse myself due to conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, again, these are the, kind of give you an overview of an ag and forestal district. We meet every five years by code to renew and update our ag and forestal districts. So I'd kind of give you an idea where we're at when an ag and forestal district is. The ag and forestal districts in Frederick County started in 1980 with one district. There are currently eight districts that include 218 parcels with a total of 11,425.93 acres in our ag districts. This renewal tonight also includes 13 new parcels being added, which will be an additional 522.63 acres with that 11,000 acres that we have. The renewal, again, is every five years, and this will, these ag and forestal districts will expire in the year 2020. The Agricultural District Advisory Committee, or AID Act, at its April 20, 2015 meeting, reviewed and endorsed these eight districts for renewal. If I could turn your attention to the map to your left, this is an overview of where all our ag districts are in Frederick County. And basically, people are asking what an ag district is and events, and just to give you a quick overlay before we get into the eight districts that we have to review them. Ag districts are established through the Code of Virginia, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, in the beginning of the slide, but it's also an approved, it has to be approved by a local governing body, and it's essential, in a nutshell, a voluntary agreement, if you will, between the landowners and the local government. And basically, what it does is that there will be no, non-agricultural activities should take place in this district. It kind of, you know, puts that out there that it's farming and protection of farmland or farmers that may not be protected under the traditional zoning. Furthermore, the landowner's point of view, they really knows that, or they should know that you get a land use taxation with it, but also you get the right to farm, to protect that and maintain that area, the farming in that area of the district that you have voluntarily came into, or voluntarily be in the district. The key thing also is that it also lets the local governing body understand that the ag and forestal district, for any future land use actions, it has to be looked at. For instance, you couldn't do any non-agricultural type activities in or around an ag district, it gets a consideration before it's moved on. And finally, from the government's perspective, or the local government's perspective, is that it serves the public good in maintaining the rural character of its district. Frederick County is predominantly a rural county, so it preserves that role condition for the community, and also it protects the productive agricultural areas that are in these districts. And furthermore, landowners also agree that they will not subdivide or look to do any land use action unless they come out of the ag and forestal district. So that's basically an overview of what an ag and forestal district. With that, Madam Chair, I would move on to our first ag and forestal district for the public hearing tonight, which is the Alben Ag and Forestal District. It's located on the map on the left, as will all the other districts through to tonight. The district is generally located west of Route 37. It's also north and south of 522. It's located near the Alben Rural Community Center, is in the Gainesboro Magisterial District. Currently, the district has 13 parcels, totaling 1,011.50 acres in that district, and that would be the Alben Ag District.
Are there any questions from the commission? Mark? All righty.
Okay. Our second district is the Apple Pie Ridge Ag and Forestal District, and this district is located along Payne Road to the north. It's in Welltown Road to the east, Apple Pie Ridge Road to the west, and Glen Dobbins to the south. It is located in the Gainesboro and Stonewall Magisterial Districts. It has 32 parcels are part of this district, with a total of 887.59 acres in the district.
Thank you. Again, questions of Mr. Charon regarding this district? All right.
The next district for review tonight is the Double Church Ag and Forestal District. This district is located along Double Church Road, Canterbury Road, Grim Road, and Weiss Mill Lane. It's located in the Opekka Magisterial District. It currently has 17 parcels located within it, and has a total acres of 923.16 acres within its district.
Again, questions of Mr. Charon? Thank you.
Thank you. The next district that we're reviewing tonight is the Green Springs Agricultural and Forestal District. This district is located along Glaze Orchard Road to the south, and Green Springs Road to the east. It's in the Gainesboro Magisterial District, and it currently has two parcels of 385.63 acres within the district.
Again, questions? Thank you, Mark.
The next district to look at is our north of Hecken Agricultural and Forestal District. This district is located along Old Charleston Road, and is bounded in the east by the Opekka Creek and Slate Lane to the west. It is in the Stonewall Magisterial District. There are currently five parcels within this district, with a total acres of 407.48 acres.
Thank you.
The next district for review is the Redbud Agricultural and Forestal District. This district is generally located along Redbud Road, though it is spread out, but the heart of the district is on the upper part of Redbud Road. The district is located in Stonewall Magisterial District, and it currently has 36 parcels assigned to it, and its total acreage is 985.59 acres.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Mark.
This is the South Frederick Agricultural and Forestal District, which currently is our largest ag and forestal district in Frederick County. This district is located along Cedar Creek Grade, Middle Road, Marble Road, and Heights Road. It's located in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Currently has 93 parcels located in the district, for a total of 5,845.90 acres in the South Frederick Ag and Forestal District.
Again, questions of Mr. Charon?
And finally, last district, number eight. This is the South Timber Ridge Ag and Forestal District. This district is located along Hollow Road to the north, and Muse Road, and Gold Orchard Road to the east. It is also in the Gainesboro Magisterial, or excuse me, it's in the Gainesboro Magisterial District, and it has 16 parcels with a total of 979.08 acres.
Again, questions of Mr. Charon? Thank you, sir.
This concludes staff's presentation of the 2015-2020 Ag and Forestal District Update. Staff is looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors at their next meeting, and I'll answer any questions, Madam Chair, that you or any of the commissioners may have on the Frederick County Ag and Forestal Districts.
Not a one. Thank you, Mr. Charon. Good job. This is a public hearing. It's the time when you may address, those of you interested in this item, may address the commission, and if you'd like to do that, come forward and give us your name and magisterial district, and if you'll tell us if it's a specific district that you'd like to talk about, which one is it, or if it's a general comment, that's fine, too. Would anybody like to speak with us?
Hi, good evening. I live in the Double Church area, and I was pleased to see that my house backs up to one of those, a portion of the district that you just spoke about. I couldn't tell by the map if the portion across Double Church Road from me was included in the district. Is there any way we could have this map? Is it on the website, or some other way to see the details of it?
It's on the website.
It is on the website. It is on the website. So if I determine that it is in the forestal district, I'm concerned about the Stevens City exit relocation and that whole study. My home, it's pretty much in my front yard almost, where that might come into. So if that's part of the forestal district, would it be impacted by that? I'm not sure what's going on with that project.
That's fine. We'll get Mr. Charon to answer you a little bit later. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding this item? Ma'am, excuse me. Would you tell me your name?
Stephanie Sheen.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Anderson. I'm here really for two reasons. First, I'm here representing Freddie County Farm Bureau, and I would like to commend you all, the board and the staff, for the work with the district. I did help set up the first ag district. There was six of us that worked on it, and one of the biggest in the state, and we worked hard on it, and it's been very good for us. Now, I'll go back to my problem. I just found this out. I try to stay with Farm Bureau pretty much up on top of things. I don't come in too often to speak if it doesn't affect us directly. But on where you're taking land out of the district, that really bothers me. A lot of this land, it was small lots, was put in the district originally because the ag district circled the land, and the people wanted to be included in the ag district because they supported agriculture. I have a couple pieces of land that I rent that's been in the ag district all along, and I just found out tonight that we have one piece that's in a trust that's been part of the farm since the '30s, and it's four acres, and they're taking it out of the ag district. And I understand where you're coming from. You want to take the smaller parcels out, but it still bothers me that you're taking land out that's strictly agriculture, has been in agriculture district for years. And also, I sat on a committee, I was asked to sit on a committee some time ago for the future comprehensive plan in Freddie County, and there's five of us on that committee. And we come up with some recommendations, and one of them is that land is changing. You can produce more income on two acres of vegetables than you can 100 acres of cattle, and that the county's going to have to recognize that these small parcels are productive and need to be considered as agriculture. And this bothers me that, right now, you're reversing that. I know there's some of it that's building lots that I don't think should ever have been considered as land use, but the parcel we have, and I know there's some other parcels, has always been in agriculture. It's always going to be in agriculture, and it's encircled by the farm. And it might be too late to do anything about it, but I just wanted to speak my piece on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to speak to us?
Yeah, my name is William Crittenden. I represent the Supreme Council of House Jacob. Our church is on Redbud Road, and I just wanted to know that if there was going to be any changes, or what was going to happen. I mean, we wasn't changing anything on our property. Everything was going to still stay the same, but I just wanted to know what was going on here with the changes that they're making. I mean, we did get a letter to come down, so we, our pastor sent us as representatives to represent the church.
That's great. Well, we're glad you're here. I would like to suggest, sir, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
All right.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us regarding this article? Anyone? I'm going to look at Rod Williams, who's our county attorney, and let him handle the legal parts, but the short, the short part of this is that in order to be in a land use designation, which comes with an agricultural district designation, you have to have five acres, and that's state law.
The question being, if you have to have at least five acres to be in land use?
No. It's why were the smaller parcels taken out? My understanding was that they were in land use.
They weren't, because generally, they have to be larger parcels to be in land use.
That's correct. That's correct. Mr. Lawrence?
If I can help also, one of the challenges we ran into this year when we were looking at the ag districts is we found that there were a number of small parcels, under five acres in size, that were in there. And when those smaller parcels were in the ag district, there's a ripple effect because it creates an impact on the adjoining property owners. So what the ag district committee did is they worked with Commissioner Revenue to identify all the parcels that were less than five acres, that had been in our district, or people wanted to be in our district, and anything that didn't qualify for the Commissioner Revenue's land use program, the committee said, should not be in the ag districts. So that's why some of those parcels came out. It's not, it's not critical of the actual parcel itself, it's just we didn't feel it satisfied the intent of the ag district based on the land use exercise. Key aspect is, there were a number of times where these smaller parcels were making the adjacent smaller parcels undevelopable, and so basically, it was impacting the property rights on somebody else, and there wasn't a collective gain for the community. So the group felt less than five should be removed if they're not in the county's land use taxation program.
And that five acre minimum is a state requirement, is it not?
Yeah, it's tied in with Commissioner Revenue's land use assessment program.
Okay. Did that help or hurt? Mr. Anderson?
What about land that's
Sir?
Land that's less than five acres that is within the farm, but is not part of the farm, but has been used with the farm, has been in the farm for years, and you have no access to it except to the farm? So that's land that has been used for agriculture actively, and so I can get that later, I just wanted.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy Gallagher. I'm in the Stonewell District. My property borders the old Charlestown, Opekka Creek. I have no problem with agricultural being included in the county. I don't have a problem with that. My problem is that when you have these farms in the middle of subdivisions and other properties, we just learned out last week that they will be applying biosolids to the farm that we're speaking about here, and I don't think they're considering the impact to the other property owners. So I would like for maybe the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors to look into this further. I don't think that, given that a lot of these properties are on wells, there's possibility of contamination of both wells and the Opekka Creek. There would be airborne pathogens that may be getting into the air. So I'd really like for them to take a look at this with regard to the agricultural land and what they can do on it. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
My name's Pat Gallagher, and I'm in Stonewell District, and I have a question. I read online, I think that the county has a biosolids monitor, and do we have one that's on the county, the county employee, the biosolids monitor that I read online that we're supposed to have?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
There's got to be a county liaison that we can deal with to deal with the biosolids that we're going to get dumped on.
We will find an answer for you.
I'd appreciate it, because
Okay. Make sure that you keep up with staff, Mr. Charon, or Mr. Lawrence, either one. And of course, we'd like to know, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we appreciate your coming. This is now the time for the Planning Commission to make a decision, and we can, we can do this all in one, or if you've got one that, all at once, excuse me, or if you have a specific area that you'd like to discuss and leave it out of the all in one, we'll do that, too. Is your consensus all together?
All together.
Together? Okay. Well, I think it would be appropriate then to have a motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the 2015 to 2020 Agricultural and Forestal District Update and send it to the Board of Supervisors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Molden, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Donalup, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on May the 27th. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's the draft update of the 2015-2016 Frederick County Primary and Interstate Road Improvement Plans. This update establishes priorities for improvements to these roadways within Frederick County, and comments from the Transportation Committee will be forwarded to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, the priorities adopted by the board will be forwarded to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. In fact, this is a joint public hearing between the Department of Transportation and Frederick County in accordance with Section 33.2-331 of the Code of Virginia, and the purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment, that's your job, on the proposed six-year plan for secondary roads for fiscal year 2016. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. As you've noted, this is an annual update. The only portion that's required by state code is the secondary plan. The county chooses to annually update the interstate and primary plan as a way of keeping VDOT, Commonwealth Transportation Board, apprised of county priorities. With that, we'll get into the Interstate Road Improvement Plan to begin. As you can imagine, with one interstate in Frederick County, there's not often a lot of changes to our interstate road improvement plan. We do have the Exit 310 project, which VDOT is kicking off. That's going to be about a two-year process. In case people are wondering about that, you know, hold on your hats, it's going to take a minute. It's a big project, but that does remain in the plan, because basically, until they're done, we leave them in there. And frankly, what I think not everybody realizes about the 310 project is that it's phase one of an eventual three-phase project that will end with a cloverleaf interchange. So it's going to be some time, even after VDOT completes the current construction process, before 310's no longer in our interstate priorities plan. There was a textual update, fairly minor, two of them actually. One is to add the word "evaluate" to the discussion of collector-distributor lanes. The reason for that is, there's some question that's coming up about the validity of those, or rather, not validity, but how easily implemented they will be once the time comes as VDOT does their Exit 313 study. So we felt like that was, that made sense to add in, to at least continue that evaluation process as opposed to looking at them as a done deal, as they are not. And finally, there was a notation in Bullet B of the ID1 improvements, which refer to the Exit 307 relocation. Of course, right now, everybody knows where 307 is in Stevens City. That is planned to move less than a mile to the south. The previous plan said there's an urgent need to begin increased study of that project. However, since that study is underway, we simply notated that. Moving on to the Primary Road Improvement Plan, once again, fairly minor changes. The first, probably the most key, is the update that was done to Route 11 North in response to the modeling that was done as part of the Route 11 North Land Use Plan Update. When that land use plan was updated, using our resources at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, we modeled the build-out of that land use plan. It resulted in increased needs for transportation on Route 11 itself. So you've seen the six-lane section, which used to extend north from the city to Merchant Street, Target, now extend to Cedar Hill Road, as far as the planning goes, anyway. So what that means for folks is, when they're trying to do rezonings and site plans and things like that, we'll be looking for a little more right-of-way to accommodate that greater section. And that was really the only change to the Primary Road Improvement Plan. Just a quick note, obviously, the rest remains the same. Route 37 continues to be the Route 37 continues to be the top priority, with the key segment of that being from ID-1 over to Exit 310. We still have the improvements called for at Route 277. May have noted my comment earlier, we leave projects in until they're actually built. 277 received funding, lost funding, still in the plan. So we're going to keep pushing for that through you all, and of course, the Board of Supervisor. And finally, you see also the South Frederick County Parkway, which was added as part of the Triangle Land Use Plan Update that would connect to a relocated Exit 307 and the commuter park and ride lots, which you'll note in the text of the plan, while this map does show points along Route 7, in the text we do note the importance of looking to the north and to the west when considering park and ride lot locations, so that not just our neighbors to the east benefit from the use of park and rides in Frederick County. Maybe we can take some of those trips off our internal roadways as well. Finally, moving on to the Secondary Road Improvement Plan. As I noted earlier, this is the one that's required part of state code. We collaborate very closely with VDOT on this. Not much in the way of major changes. But we'll begin with what's known as the Frederick County Major Road Improvement Projects. Now Items 1 through 8 are the same projects that were on there last year. The key project that's moving forward is Sulfur Springs Road. They've been working on right-of-way and design and all those fun things. So I don't expect it to be on the plan for a lot longer, but we've still got a little time to wait, particularly in the current funding environment. But they're close. The projects that were added, Projects 9, 10, and 11, Valley Mill Road, Airport Road Extension, and Snowden Bridge Boulevard are all revenue-sharing projects of ours. Valley Mill Road is under design. Airport Road Extension is a little bit in limbo with the recent actions on rezonings in that area. And finally, Snowden Bridge Boulevard, very close to going to bid. We have pulled in our proposals for qualified bidders. Those are being vetted out by Mr. Wilder and his staff now. The design's been approved by VDOT. We're working through the agreements with the utilities. So we expect that project to actually go to bid very shortly. Next, one of our smallest pots of money, but probably gets the most attention. Now, there is a key textual update to what we've always known as the Hard Surface Road Program. It was pointed out at Transportation Committee that that name, the Hard Surface Road Improvement Program, may be actually a bit of a misnomer, since we're talking about dirt roads that want to be paved. So in response to that feedback, the Transportation Committee has recommended updating that language to the non-hard-surface road improvement program. Now, as you look at the scheduled list, which is on the screen, same as it was last year at your adoption, no projects were able to be moved on to the list. So you still have Woodside Road at the top. That very first one is a privately funded piece. The following section is for the state to do the rest, followed by Wright Road, Carter Lane, Pack Horse Road, and two segments of Laurel Grove Road. That's broken into two segments, frankly, because if you keep a dollar amount below a certain point, VDOT, the district, is able to use their local forces. They don't have to involve Richmond as much and that sort of thing. Ends up being quicker and cheaper to do. So that's why you see that in two segments. Moving on to the unscheduled list, same projects that were there last year. There are three projects at the bottom, 21, 22, and 23, which are Sir Johns Road, Mount Olive Road, and Shockiesville Road. They're not probably truly the final, the last three on the list. They are last right now is because they were added since the last time we've done an actual update of the ranking system. For those not familiar, when we are able to promote projects, unlike this year, because enough money is coming in, we rerank the list. We look at that objective scoring system that was adopted by the Board of Supervisors, which includes everything from accidents and whether buses go on there, incidences of horizontal and vertical curvature that should be corrected, drainage issues, how many trips are on the road. All these different things get looked at, put into a scoring system, and that's how the most worthy projects are selected and promoted. It has not been reranked at this time because we weren't able to promote. So that's just a word of warning, that just because you're number one on the unscheduled list doesn't mean you'll be number one when things fall out. And that's frustrating for some people. However, the Board, in their wisdom, thinks it makes sense that once you finally have the money, you need to take another look and see, is that project still the most worthy? So that's why we do that. With that, as you noted, this is a public hearing, and of course, I can take any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Bishop? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak regarding this item? Yes, if you'll come forward, give us your name and magisterial district, please.
My name is Priscilla Schultz. I live in the Double Church Road District. We've had a serious problem there, and I didn't hear us mentioned in any of the planning. Since 1973, we've been trying to get something done about the road. The speed limit in '73 was 55, and people's driveways, there's not even the hills and the curves, not even 50-foot of sight distance. And it was about 15 years ago, they finally dropped a speed limit for us. But since then, one housing development after another has gone in there. There's a number of mailboxes on that road. Last spring and late winter, within a six-month period, my mailman was in an automobile accident. People coming over the hill where I live hit her. The last car ended up rolling into the church yard about four foot from the church, upside down. And I've been working and complaining to VDOT, complaining to VDOT, to lower the speed limit on that road, put stop signs up on the intersections, because you just cannot see. There, most of the people on that road cannot make a left turn out into that road. And when I make a turn out in that road, there's not even a 50-foot sight distance from my driveway, and Sheranda Lane is right there at it. You can't see. So I have to risk my life every time I go out of my driveway and go up that road and go right, and just get out of there as fast as I can. And it shouldn't be that way, and I don't understand why we're not on the list for the improvements to have stop signs and speed limits put up there. It's a terrible road.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Again, I'm Stephanie Shahean. I live along the Double Creek Road corridor as well. I can attest to what you said about the speeds, the, we've had motorcycles and large trucks just fly by. I'm on the Whitfield Circle, just this little circle that comes off. It's near a couple of the large subdivisions. And the speeding is a problem. I rarely ever see any police, and I don't know if this is necessarily the avenue to express these concerns, but since I'm here, I'm going to express them. So that's one issue, is the speeding. It is a problem. I don't know if lowering the speed limit is going to help, but I think higher police presence would definitely do the trick. Every now and then, we see a deputy sitting up near these subdivisions, and that's about it. The other issue I had mentioned before, and I'm glad Mr. Bishop was speaking to the Road Improvement Plan, I am concerned about 277, but mostly about that relocation. I'd really like, maybe we can meet later to go over how the Frederick County Parkway is going to impact Double Church Road. And again, I'm about the third house in on Whitfield Circle from Double Church Road. It's only about 200 feet from my driveway, and I'm very concerned about the future of this improvement plan. I don't think it's going to improve much. I think it should stay the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak with us about roads? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Do the Planning Commissioners have any questions of Mr. Bishop or comments they would like to make?
I have one.
Yes?
John, when we see these coming to us like this, and I know it's going to be a hard question because of funding and what have you, but when we see things as far as 2021 or, what's the average, do you see these things on these type of tracking lines that we see here, I mean, for improvements and what? Because I know everybody has, but if something is going now, say, 2015 or 2013, where you said like Sulfur Spring Road, how long has that been in the works? How long is the timeline?
Sulfur Spring Road itself, shoot, it's been on there over a decade. Now, it's been on there for different levels of funding. It's taken a long time to build it up towards close to being constructed. Shoot, we weren't able to start talking seriously about that project until the last couple of years, frankly. So it really is a reflection of the rate at which funds are coming in. If you look at that list of major road improvement projects, most of them that have significant funding on them are revenue-sharing projects. When we do those projects, we get the state dollars and we partner them up with private dollars, and occasionally they get a little hairy, as at least one of those is, depending on what's going on with the partnership. But it truly is, it's a reflection on the rate at which funds are coming into the county. I know a couple of years ago, there was a big funding bill that was passed. However, in very short order, all of those revenues projections were not just being rolled back, but drastically rolled back, because their projections, when they adopted that funding package, for all the, for all the, lack of a better way to put it, political heat that was associated with that passing, we're not seeing it here in Frederick County.
And you don't see that really, that pattern really changing a whole lot, I guess. I mean, predominantly, we're going to see this same type of environment, I guess, in the future that...
Not right now. The focus right now from the state level is on the House Bill 2, the House Bill 1887, which those are more about prioritizing dollars and how you choose where to spend the money as opposed to getting us more money. Which is, of course, a valuable piece of the puzzle. However, this is something I've been looking at my entire career, since well before I came here. And the fact of the matter is, without trying to get too political, the backlog is overwhelming for the state. So it's my personal opinion that what is truly needed, in addition to being smart about how you spend the money and looking hard at those things, is a serious influx of thought to transportation. And of course, I'm biased, I'm a road guy. I'm going to say that. But it's something I've been studying a long time. So it's probably more than you want to hear from me, but there you go.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moon?
John, when it comes to some of the safety concerns that folks have expressed, I know that those aren't necessarily captured in our Road Improvement Plan, but I think it might be beneficial to kind of give some perspective on how those types of issues are addressed, since it's not something that shows up here, particularly some of the concerns about the conditions on Double Church Road.
Double Church has been an interesting, and we have a lot of situations like that throughout the county, where development, oftentimes by right development as opposed to major subdivisions and that sort of thing that happened within the UDA. Back Mountain Road's an important example. There's a number of things like that. Middle Road has its challenges. Double Church Road is very challenged. Some things we've been able to do on Double Church Road in the last few years. One, there was a speed study fairly recently conducted. I have to double-check the dates, but it's within the last two or three years, and it just didn't show the need. And that doesn't mean people aren't speeding and doing foolish things. That means that an engineering analysis shows that reducing the speed below what the design speed is, isn't going to help you, because I think we all know in our hearts that a speed limit is not going to stop people from speeding. So that's part of the issue we face on Double Church Road. The other thing, there was a reference made to trucks. It was right before Supervisor Ewing went off the board that we actually did put a truck restriction on Double Church Road. And once again, if you have business that begins or ends on Double Church Road as opposed to using it as a through street, you're still allowed to go there as a truck driver. And enforcement may be part of the issue, but that's true, that's a challenge all over the entire county. And I do believe our sheriff does his best to kind of allocate those things as he can. I think if we, and I'm sure if the sheriff himself had his wish, we'd have somebody out there just about every day, but those are some of the challenges we face. Now, I know from personal conversations that Cliff Balderson and Lloyd Ingram, who is here, who I should have pointed out earlier, are regularly looking at the issues on Double Church Road, for instance, and a number of those things, and they're always looking for opportunities to get safety grants, which is another stream of money that's outside of this plan, to try and address some of those issues. But those dollars are very competitive, they're few and far between, and frankly, goes back to my little political piece earlier, it's just, there's just not enough money to go around, and it gets very challenging.
Thanks.
Thank you for asking that, Mr. Moon. That helped me, too. Anybody else? Well, it's time that we make a recommendation for the Board.
Your turn.
Madam Chair, there's nothing else to be said. I'd like a recommendation to update plan of the Interstate Primary and Secondary Road Plan before to the Board.
Second.
Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Donlap, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Kenny, yes. Molden, yes.
Emanuel, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the Chair votes yes. This goes to the Board also on May the 27th. Our next item is an action item for the Commission. It is rezoning 04-15 of Abrams Chase, submitted by Greenway Engineering to revise proffers associated with rezoning 11-06, approved by the Board of Supervisors on January the 10th, 2007. This revision changes the 13 residential units to age-restricted residential units and adjusts the monetary contribution to offset the impact of that development accordingly. The properties are located on the north side of Sensory Road, Route 657, approximately 400 feet west of the intersection of Channing Drive and Sensory Road in the Red Bud Magisterial District, and are identified by property identification numbers 65-A-27A and 65-A-28A. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is, as you mentioned, a proffer condition amendment. It's a minor amendment, and therefore doesn't have to go through the rezoning and public hearing process, because it does not necessarily affect the density or use. That's why it's a public meeting item here this evening. The properties identified on the screen to your left, highlighted, of course, with a black boundary. You mentioned it was rezoned several years ago. It's reflected on the zoning map as an RP Residential Performance Zoning Classification. And the proffers associated with that request enabled 13 single-family residential units, lots to be developed on the property. So what this proffer condition amendment simply does is seeks to change those 13 residential units from standard residential units, if you will, from open-market residential units to strictly age-restricted residential units. Again, the total number of 13 remains the same. In addition to modifying the language to clarify that it is an age-restricted proffer, the applicant has also modified the monetary contribution associated with each residential unit. Of course, the county's development impact model seeks to identify what the impacts are associated with any residential request. And the initial development impact model and proffer for this project was approximately 23... and proffer for this project was approximately $23,000. So with the applicant designating it as age-restricted units, that then eliminates potentially the impact to schools, and the proffers accordingly have been reduced down to $2,835 per residential lot. The generalized development plan on the screen to your left, included in the package, is exactly the same as it was for the original rezoning, so no changes there. And ultimately, we're seeking the Planning Commission's recommendation, this minor modification to the proffer statement for the Abrams Chase rezoning request. There don't appear to be any impacts, issues associated with this request. Of course, the evaluation's based upon the reduction in the monetary contribution to offset the impact of development. Be happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have. Mr. Evan Wyatt is here this evening representing the Abrams Chase request.
Thank you. Any questions at this time, Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering, representing Harvest Communities this evening. Mike pretty much covered the conditional zoning amendment request. I really don't have much to add, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Very good. Thank you.
Quiet night. Thank you very much. All righty. Let's see. Mike's last little dot affirm there are no anticipated issues with changing this project. Agree with that?
Madam Chair, I would say, yeah, this is very straightforward. If anything, it reduces the impact relative to the use. The number of units doesn't change. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it does, through the revised proffer, still address the fiscal impact pursuant to the county's model. For that reason, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of rezoning application number 04-15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Mauden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Shepherd, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This goes to the Board of Supervisors on June the 10th. All righty. Our next item is information slash discussion item, and Mrs. Perkins is going to help us with farm breweries and distilleries. And this is a discussion on a revision to the zoning ordinance to include farm breweries and farm distilleries as permitted uses in the RA Rural Areas District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is an ordinance amendment to update the farm winery text to include breweries and distilleries as permitted uses in the RA Rural Areas District pursuant to the Code of Virginia changes both this year and last year. So really, what the amendment entails, there are a few new definitions, as well as a revised definition for farm wineries. There's some additional text about onsite sales tasting during regular business hours, some kitchen and catering activities. There's also removal of the site plan requirement for the activities in lieu of what's called an illustrative sketch plan. And finally, the main change is a revision to the special events allowance number to decrease it from 150 to 100 to be more consistent with the county code for special events, festival permits. So the DRC reviewed this at their April meeting, and they forwarded the changes to the Planning Commission for review. Tonight, we're seeking your comments to forward to the Board of Supervisors, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any comments for Mrs. Perkins? Any at all?
We went over this a good bit, and I'm sure we'll find problems down the road, but it looks like it'll work right now.
Is there a minimum size farm, say, two and a half acres?
Wasn't it?
I have another minor nittinoid, Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Is it the state that said that we should provide soup? Soup?
Soup? Oh, if I have a typewall, we'll fix that.
Did the state suggest that? I'm talking, provide finger foods, soups, and appetizers for visitors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did take the state text.
It is the state text?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Well, I'm...
If they want to provide soup, they can provide soup.
It's going to be kind of tough.
They don't have to provide soup.
Oh, well. It's okay.
That's what it was.
And as far as for minimum size, it's actually 10 acres in the ordinance for the special events on the properties. Subsection D.
And any other comments?
I agree with Commissioner Unger. I think we've vetted it pretty hard, so whatever jumps up at us, we can handle. So I think it's good, it's a good pass on to the board.
Okey-dokey. And our next item is also an information discussion item, and it's site plan revision requirements to the zoning ordinance to update the site plan requirements.
Again, thank you. This is a proposed revision to Part 802 of the zoning ordinance, which is the second section that pertains to site plans. The main changes are an inclusion of provisions for what is called minor site plans, as well as illustrative sketch plans. Now, as far as minor site plans, these have been commonly submitted over the years and approved by the county. However, the term minor site plan and the requirements that go along with them have never been codified. Now, for illustrative sketch plans, this is a new proposal for inclusion. These will be applicable to agricultural businesses, such as the farm, wineries, distilleries, breweries, as well as for small-scale conditional use permits that may not necessitate the need for an engineered site plan. So for minor site plans, the text is actually consistent with the policy that's been in place for years. A minor site plan would constitute a revision that increases a structure area by 20% or less and does not exceed 5,000 square feet of disturbed area. Minor site plans, the text included in the ordinance covers a reduced submission guideline and also has a reduced fee. For illustrative sketch plans, these are plans that would not have to be prepared by a licensed professional. It's something that a property owner could do themselves with the help of the county, and there's no fees for those. So again, the DRC did review this item at their April meeting. They did have some modifications, and that text is before you tonight. So tonight, we're seeking comments from the commission to forward to the board. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any comments that you'd like to have passed on?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're at the end of our agenda. I'll share with you that we will not have a June the 3rd meeting, so we need to remove that from our schedule. Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we eliminate the June, next June meeting.
Second.
Call in favor?
No.
Opposed? Thank you. But we will be here on June the 17th, so plan for that.
Okay.
We need to adjourn. We missed our adjournor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great. Thank you all very much.